I'd like to have a moment to sign. Yes. Okay, so here we are. The motion is signed, right?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Dan?
The warrants are going around. I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes of February sixteenth as written.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor? All right, we've all just signed enough. Can't move forward. So we have under all the business of aquaculture, lease moratorium. So last meeting, we had a lady here.
Crystal Canning.
Crystal Canning. And she represents Protect Maine's Fishing Heritage Foundation. So she gave a long presentation as to why she wanted a moratorium to be considered by the town. So I don't think anyone is prepared to make any decisions. The only power that select board has is to put an article on the town meeting in August. And so we'd like to hear from, I see the other side. If there's, I see that there are a lot of people representing Cooks. And by the way, like the faith cooks for all they've done for the town. They have done so much for the town. They help with the clothes if somebody has a problem with their mowing. If their barge is here, they help. They've, you know, they've just been extremely helpful to the town. Not to mention the fireworks barge that we really need. Go ahead.
It helps the fishery do our catch law and staff and solideries.
Well, I think it was Jason that said at this last meeting that he didn't want to make any decisions or even think about it until the fishermen waited.
I don't even want to entertain an article anyway. I mean, you've got all these folks, this is their word.
If it is, if it's not bothering the fishing community, I see no reason, I personally see no reason why we should entertain it either.
Who, what organization she works for?
She works for Protect Maine's Fishing Heritage Foundation. And I did speak to Julie. She thought she had a worthy cause. I don't know about how she feels about aquaculture. I think the point she was trying to make that I do agree with is local control. That it, I mean, Cooks has been very aware of the fishing community and what our needs are. And I guess she's concerned that some big industrial site, foundation, whatever, will come in and the state has the right to just sign the lease without any, without any local input at all. So the one point I would have agreed with is it would have been nice if they ran it by the town, which would also run it by the fishermen, because it's not always going to be Cooks, that's what her point was. I mean, that was basically what I gathered.
Also, she was not clear about, we talked about the salmon fishing and the, what are they called, fin something?
Fin fish.
Fish. And then I said, well, what about mussels? What about oysters? What about those things? They were not so specific about that. So it seemed a bit muddled. And personally, I remember the salmon pens in Johnson Bay. And I remember them being horribly overcrowded and miserable. So I didn't have an objection with that as long as, you know, if you're going to do salmon pens, don't overstock them so you're going to have to feed them tons of antibiotics and junk. So, but the presentation was not clear. And that was what my problem was.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So I'm Jennifer Robinson. I work for the aquaculture. I'm the compliance officer. I know when Crystal's here, she spoke about specifically DMR. But we are also regulated by Department of Environmental Protection. We have an Army Corps of Engineers permit. So the Army Corps of Engineers go through National Marine Fisheries Service as well as U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So it's not just DMR that regulates us. We are regulated, I mean, we put in our stocking densities and they either get approved or they don't. So all of our stock densities are regulated. As far as speed, we have to have underwater cameras in all of our pens to monitor the feed. We do environmental monitoring under all of the pens. All that information from environmental monitoring gets submitted to DEP as well as the services, which is U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and National Marine Fisheries Service. So we are regulated. I don't know if that answers some of those questions.
Well, that was something that I was going to just say before you wanted to speak, that the gentleman that she brought, that was an retired DMR person, spent a long time stressing that supposedly there wasn't enough regulation, that there were like two and a half people in DMR that could, wasn't that, isn't that what you got out of it? And so I'm glad you're saying that because we didn't hear, we didn't hear any other side. And this was just, she called up and wanted to be on the agenda. And okay, well, we don't deny people being on the agenda.
She is, she is, she's going around to aquaculture towns. She is doing that. I live in Pembroke and she's gone to Pembroke. I know others who live in Perry.
I live in Perry. She's come to Perry as well.
It seems to me she just wants support for Frenchman's Bay. That's all I kept hearing is Frenchman's Bay.
Well, we did hear a lot about Frenchman's Bay.
That's how a lot of it's stemming from that, from, I don't know if you guys have heard of American Aqua Farms, but there's, there's a project that they're proposing down in that area. And I think it's two sites, there's 75 acres each. So they're larger than what any of our sites are.
Is this the one in Bellew, is it Butchport?
No, Goldsboro.
Right in Goldsboro?
Yeah, Goldsboro.
Okay.
Frenchman's Bay, not Blue.
You want to say something?
Well.
Yeah, Frenchman's. It's in Frenchman's Bay.
I heard the mention that you guys were talking about issues with local control. If that's something that you actually want it to go after, there's other avenues to go through than putting on a moratorium. Like, many of you know, I'm on the Shellfish Advisory Council for DMR. And they also have an aquaculture version. It can be a topic that could be brought up at any of their meetings and have them go through. Because I believe that's more of a regulatory issue than it actually is a legislation issue. So it could be something that could be added to the application process as a suggestion.
You're right about that. I mean, I don't think we're interested in like regulating anything. We just don't want some huge industrial company to come in and have the state give them acres and acres of the bottom up and then then hurt the fishing grounds.
It would also be the avenue to go if you're looking for them to make it a actual policy that DMR has to be more proactive.
Which is legislative. That is legislative, that.
Yeah.
Well, I have something, I have something to add. We used to have four times, at least four times more pens in the water around here than we have now. Tracy, you fished all your life, and Tia, you fished all your life. Did it ever affect you guys at all?
When there's no fish in the water, me as an urgent fisherman, we lose price, we lose product. It's not there.
So the pens are out?
Our row, our percentage is there when the fish are in the water here. We have to have the feed, whatever it takes to grow up. And it's just not me. You go to McFadden's and ask Jay when the urgent season starts. How many hundred dollars bill goes to that place?
A lot.
Oh, yeah.
Prove the whole town.
The whole town.
Exactly.
You take it away, wherever they want.
You wanted to speak. Go ahead.
Everyone's concerned about the fish and so on, but we really need to be concerned about the community. I'm a small business owner. I support Cooks. And Cooks has an umbrella of Tatcheries and Green North. And I couldn't function without Cooks. So the urgent divers, the scholar divers, and we also, so we fill air, we also fill air for Quebec's fire department. So if we had to close, the fire department would have to be filling air somewheres else. So there are over 215 people in this area that work for Cooks Aquaculture. So has anyone taken a look at the ripple effect that that would have on all of the businesses here and people spending their money here? That's detrimental to Quebec.
Well, the thing is, I've raised a family here and I know how hard it is. And I know how bad we need a company like Cooks. I know this. Now, my grandchildren are being raised here. And it's damn hard to raise a family in this town. To restrict anybody like Cooks is foolishness. This woman just was kind of out of her mind, if you ask me. I mean.
I believe the Frenchman's Bay, that's a completely different place. It's not even close to what, you know.
That's a whole different operation or?
Yeah. We are really glad you're all here because she came and took us by surprise. We really didn't have any idea what we were, you know, why she was here. So we read a little and we thought we'd put it on the agenda without her here, you know, so the town could have feedback. And I see that we're not for it.
I mean, we have a business that's right on the water. And we love it. We love it to hear the vote and see it from up in the morning, you know.
And encourage more pens.
And I hear it each, I mean, we've got to have it.
So I do want to, as part of, like, when anybody applies for a DMR lease, I spend years and weeks applying for one. We actually, we have a couple of renewals in your town coming up in a couple of years for a couple of our leases. The town actually has a chance to comment. I know that they reach out to Harbor Masters, the Harbor Committees for their comments. So I'm not saying that you could restrict it from coming in, but they do ask for the town's input and local, like, they'll go to Harbor Committee meetings and ask for their input as well.
And that's where she went first. She went to the Harbor Board and they sent it, sent her over to the Select Board. And we put it out to the town. And that's how, that's as far as we've gotten. And it seems pretty obvious to me that it's not a great idea.
We appreciate you guys being reached out to and.
Do you ever sit down and do a roundtable or a debate, a public debate about this? Because it would seem face to face might be a good way to go.
Go ahead.
She's come to some of our meetings. We had a lease hearing in Southwest Harbor six months ago. And she came to the meeting and made her case. George Warren was out of radio at the time and made a presentation.
Do you mean with her specifically or just in community kind of?
No, in a community. I mean, because it seems to me like she's bouncing around from select board to select board. And then you're going to come around and do the whole thing. But maybe it would, you'd accomplish more if you did a face to face and debated issues.
So there is a group coming around, C-Grant and Maynard Culture Association and DMR are setting up meetings to go around different communities to talk about. And she has got a lot of this information.
Yeah, do you work with?
I work.
Yeah, there's C-Grant.
That's the deal.
Yeah, from the college.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Can I, so maybe you'll be able to help me understand something. So is Maine the only state that does water leasing without any input from any place? I mean, do you, does all states do it that way or?
So Maine absolutely does have input.
I'm not saying that, but I mean, DMR is who leases the water in the states of Maine, our understanding.
With 12 other different governments.
But is that how it is in all other states is kind of my question? Is there anything exceptional about Maine in regards to that?
We would have sites in Virginia and North Carolina, the states involved in that.
It's not, it's not the same departments because they're all held something different. But yeah, the states are involved in that.
Because, I mean, the impression that I got from the woman who presented to us before, I don't know, I don't want to say if she was anti anything, but she was more thinking that the town could do something around the state behavior of being like the sole decision maker. But also recognizing that even if we did the ordinance, it probably has no bearing because we don't make the leases on the water, you know? So that was kind of, I didn't quite.
That was her point. That's what I got out of it.
I didn't quite understand all of that, but I was just curious in regards to, you know, is Maine different than any place else or, and since you were here, I figured I'd ask.
It's, Maine is actually seen as the place that does it best in America.
How long has there been salmon cages in the water right around here? How many years?
1980s, early 1980s.
Okay. And it has never affected clamming or fishing whatsoever?
In my personal experience, I would say.
Nope, I'm just saying that as a fact.
No, I'm saying, in my personal experience, I'm from southern Maine, and when I moved here and the possum plants and everything were all still going on, there was so much wild stocks in the bays here. So I, I mean, nutrients is nutrients, right? It just.
Since the herring industry has closed, we're seeing a little bit more because of the salmon, the feed and stuff, you know, you're getting a little bit more coming in, ground fishing stuff. I think it's great.
Well, I never remember when I was tied up with the DMR marks, that we were talking about the way the pilings are being deteriorated faster than they used to be because of the worm activity. And somebody said to me, that's because the water is cleaner here now. But it was filthy when you had all the fisheries and all the smoke houses and the panning stuff because you were throwing fish guts and all kinds of stuff in the water.
We were throwing trash.
Trash.
We dumped that trash on, on there.
You know, a lot of crap in the water. And now it's much cleaner. There's nothing else for the worms to feed on.
I would like to see the House Board and the Board of Selectmen go with 110% with Cooks.
Well, there's no doubt about it, Alice. We miss jobs, we can't afford to lose any.
That's all I need to hear.
These folks are responsible. We all know it. Cooks is a good company. They're responsible. It doesn't hurt the clamming, doesn't hurt the fishing, helps the community, gives us much needed jobs. I mean, every time somebody comes into this town, tries to help us out, the industry goes out of business, the smokehouse, the sardine industry. That was all from people trying to help us out. We don't need their help.
Federal regulations.
Period.
So I'd like to ask Cooks, let's say hypothetically, another competitor of your size and stature would want to come in and go to the state and get a lease and come up here. Would that have any effect on, I mean, would you, well, I'm just, I'm just hypothetically, I think that's, you've been here and I don't think Cooks has ever bothered anybody, done nothing but helped the town. I think that the only thing I would look forward in the future is a large company as your competitor, I don't know how well the waters are, I don't, I'm sure they, the waters are great here and.
Basically, I'd like you to get larger.
So if the state, if the state gave a lease to a large company that was your competitor, would that affect you? Because we don't have any control over that.
I guess what we would say is that we're not opposed to competition. There were, how many guy, how many other companies here at one time?
Well, there was a lot, but in the early 2000s, there was three different companies.
So we're not opposed to competition, but we want them to follow the same regulations we did.
Well, no, it becomes hard, like, because you're, like, we're in this bay, well, in all the bays that we operate in, we're all in, all out, right? Like, how farmers have crop rotation and they're constantly rotating, that's what, we do the same thing. So it just makes it harder because that's our business plan. We hope if someone else came in, they'd follow suits the same way. So that would be, you know, concern.
That might speak to her local control, that that may help you in that, in that sense.
But I don't think we have to do a moratorium for.
No, we don't have to do a moratorium.
We can ask for a say in a new lease without having to have.
I think, you know, some kind of letter to our representatives or something on the state level in regards to the importance of town being involved in leases, you know?
In the very first meeting that, that any company has to do when they first start even looking at a lease, is they have to have what they call municipal meetings. And so you sit down with a selectman from the town. That is the very first meeting before you can put an application in or anything. That is the first meeting.
So in the 80s, that would have been done with the select board of Quebec?
So I don't, in the 80s, I'm not sure if it was the same product, I was involved.
I'm kind of looking at the fishermen, like, in the 80s, did they come across the town?
They had a meeting down in Jim down here in Quebec.
They did?
Most of them was over Eastport.
So that's, that answers my question. I mean, if they have to come and explain, like, a new person with a new lease, what their, what their plans are, then I don't see any reason for.
So clearly selfish question. Are you going to be farming mussels or oysters?
So I'd really like it if we did oysters. We've, we've dabbled some with mussels. We've done some integrated, yeah, multi-trophic. The problem is, is taking up the space from the salmon and a lot, like, if you put too many mussels too close to the salmon, then it takes up the oxygen.
Dallas, they tried that down the DeCops, didn't they? Wasn't that what they had going down the DeCops for a while?
They had a hatchery and stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
It was with the Orychids and stuff.
We've, Futchree's Island, I think it's actually in Eastport, not on the Quebec side, but there is, there is a gentleman there that's doing mussels. And I know there was some muscle leases up past our South Bay site. I think that was around the back as well.
They're doing them on ropes.
Yeah.
They're like vertical.
Yep.
Yeah.
I had just had a question about the oysters. If you were these guys who were to do oysters, would you do half ways or not doing oysters?
Well, I like oysters. And the other reason why I'm making this argument is I grew up in New Haven, Connecticut, which back in the 50s was like oyster capital of the world. And I grew up around oysters. And oysters are worse than barnacles but bigger. And for an area that hasn't had oysters in over a century, it will make a mess.
Yeah, we don't have any plans on doing oysters.
But there is Downer Dam, Roscada, those parts of Maine, there is quite a good oyster farming industry there. Blue Hill, yeah, Blue Hill as an area, this is where Crystal got her start with opposing a muscle farm. So there are other areas, but we cook, I'm not into doing that in Maine this time.
Your next question should be, do you have any use for green crabs?
Actually, I was ready for this woman to be here and make an argument on mercury and I was going to bring up green crabs.
Can you feed them to your salmon?
There's been work done.
Ah, see.
I had this argument laid out.
I can always provide my.
Move on it.
Maybe we propose a letter to our state reps or something, you know?
Just let it go. Don't put it on a, don't put it on the referendum.
We gave it to the audience.
Let it go.
We gave both sides, yes.
Yes.
I'm totally convinced you all. Thank you for coming in.
I've never worked for a same company that is a fisherman. I know it's helped. Because I've been here before they was here, then they was here for a while, and then they laughed.
You can tell the difference.
Yeah, then they come back and it's like, geez, I wish they'd put some more pens in, Marcus out.
Yeah, you guys going to put any more in?
Really?
That was going to be my next question.
That's because you're a lobster fisherman, right?
We don't have any, no applications in the process now. We have not heard of any applications. We'd love to have.
Let's talk.
We'll work this out. We'd love to have you guys around here.
I just want something.
Anything taxable.
Because Renee has that point of view.
It's jobs.
Raise into town money, but.
We need to have people who work.
We just want some, whatever helps the fishermen. So if it helps the fishermen.
Not just the fishermen, we need people to have jobs.
Well, jobs, absolutely, Jason, absolutely. If we keep the young families here.
Yeah.
So nice to see a former select person.
Thank you very much. You come down and visit me down yonder. Talking about kids from the dad's sire, I'll tell you that right now.
You could remind them all tomorrow's that public hearing at 5:45, that you need townspeople to show up for that funding for the lunch program.
It's singed enough.
School boards have a public hearing tomorrow at 5:45.
Is it lunch tomorrow? Is that what they're talking about? I thought they're trying to mass.
What, honey?
What's the public hearing for, for the school tomorrow?
Oh, it's just a, it's a, it's a finality. It is. It's just a finality on paying for the, paying for lunches.
Oh, something you have to do.
Nothing. No, it's just a public. No masks, no more masks. The mask done.
Good, I thought no more.
No more masks.
They're done.
Well, I think that we, I think that it's definitely.
Vince May.
Yes.
I'd like to thank all you guys.
Thank you so much.
We're here every two weeks. Please, make some work.
They're here when it counts.
They're here when it counts, that's right. Thank you.
And now the whole party is clear sound.
They saw the warrant signing, they said, I will go back to normal.
Amanda, coming from Connecticut, I'm happy you left too.
Yeah. Well, I left early, early in my age.
Well, no, we got. I did, I used to be door to door down by seaside.
Spouses and.
That's rough.
I lived in where they called Fair Haven, which I was emancipated at 16 and I lived in an apartment building they called the Skittles.
Amanda, in the 70s, you lived there.
In the 70s, my parents were in high school.
We are, we're going to go to the senior fuel donation now.
Go ahead. It's a, we were contacted by an anonymous, well, there was an anonymous donor, the Boston Foundation, and they've already given us the money and we've got it. So we put it right into the senior.
Any parameters?
And how much money?
Thirty thousand.
Wow. No stipulation of how many years to spend there?
They contacted, they called and they wanted to know what, they, they talked to me, they wanted to know what our senior fuel fund was like. I told them. And the next week, we got an email.
Really? Where did that come from?
The Boston Foundation had an anonymous donor.
Very nice. Excellent.
That's excellent. Well, we say the anonymous donor.
Yep, if you're a Quebec resident and you're over 60 and you've got a quarter of a tank of fuel, you've tried other means, then give us a call up here, talk us through that and we'll.
Didn't you talk about that included something else too, right?
It's not just, it's not just fuel, it's propane and it's also electric.
It's wood.
And it could be wood.
Could be wood.
Fuel source. Any fuel source.
Heating source.
Any heating source that you can't provide for yourself.
Just on old tires.
It has to be equivalent to like $200. Is it $200 gallons?
I think it's 100 gallons.
100 gallons. 100 gallons. Equivalent, yeah, equivalent to whatever 100 gallons is on the market, which is going up.
Which is going up, so.
Well, that's really great news.
Encouraging. There's hope in humanity.
Somebody resigned from the planning board?
We have two resignations from the planning board. Wanda Matthews and Patricia Van Rollins. She was the alternate. Wanda got bumped up to a regular board member, but due to her schedule, she's not able to fulfill.
So who says leave on the planning board?
It leaves Sharon Yates, Rhonda Welcome, and the new Alex Henry.
Oh, yes.
And there are two members, which goes on to the third item on the agenda.
We'll just go to that.
Okay, so you all received the email that I sent a few weeks ago?
Yes.
And that was sent to the, and this is stemming from frustration from the.
The planning board. Are there any alternates besides Sharon, Rhonda, and Alex? Have we just had the three?
We're looking for.
There's five members and there are two alternates.
Right, that's what they're allowed to have.
There are two that have been consistently absent due to the winter. They're away. There is a policy, I included it in the email here, this is directly from the ordinance, the planning board ordinance, that, uh, if a member fails, a vacancy can occur when a member fails to attend three consecutive regular meetings. After that happens, uh, the chair board, a chairperson shall immediately advise you, and that's what has taken place, they have been consistently absent. So you have to have a hearing. Municipal officers may remove members of the planning board by unanimous vote, that's unanimous, for cause after notice and hearing. So the email was the notice.
This is the hearing.
The hearing is now.
And we're talking Cecil and Deb.
And Debbie. Both longtime members of the.
Yeah, they're longtime members, and because of that, they should know the, the urgency of this particular time when we're going into a comprehensive plan.
We have to have people that are here.
And, you know, I know it's.
There's nothing to do with them.
Right. We appreciate their service over the years.
There's not them, it's just, there's not, they're not here.
The world doesn't stop in Quebec now.
Who's gonna replace them?
Right, well, we can advertise that if that's what you want me to do, you know?
So I just want to confirm, they were both contacted?
Yep.
And, and no response from either?
Um, yes, I got a response from Debbie, she's not either. See, what's changed is the Zoom, oh, that was the budget change.
There's plenty of Zoom. Well, you can't, it's not a state of emergency anymore, it's state.
That was in Arizona.
Now Zoom is a wild.
And to Cecil's events, he did come to you in December, he let you know he was not gonna be here. So he was upfront about it, it's just not working.
Yeah.
Because there's so many other actions.
Nothing has been done for the comprehensive plan, nothing for six months.
Right, and I think Cecil, in fairness, we may have been under the misconception that, um, I know he was, that the Washington County Council of Governments was still in existence and would step right in.
We would behoove us to do it ourselves anyway, because they don't live in Quebec and they're not gonna have somebody from, like, excuse me, but from Calis that is gonna tell Quebec how they are going to manage their comprehensive plan.
But that's their function and that's what they did last time.
The chaos of the board has led to resignations.
Nobody else wanted to do it.
Patricia Van Rollins has agreed to stay on the comprehensive plan part of it. You did have two members set up to be from the planning board on the new comprehensive plan committee. But now you've got Alex and Patricia is willing to stay on that, so I'm just leaving that alone, she's already signed it.
Well, it has, there has to be two from, two from the, uh, well, two from the planning board, two from the small board.
Actually, at the, at the planning board meeting that we were at, that, then they were having the challenge of not having their members in place, um. We read, we read from the piece that the select board can change that statement of two people from the planning board and.
Select board created it.
Correct, so, so we could.
From the planning board.
This year, just recognize, we're not getting two people.
So is it Alex that wants to?
Yeah, Alex is on it from the planning board.
Yeah, I guess it, it was just out of you. It's fair that we did that. If they don't have, if, but, let's say they could have up to two.
Right.
Which means if they don't have a second one, they don't, they couldn't.
So now we have the people.
Patricia will say.
Right, for the comprehensive thing.
So we have two open slots for, um, the planning board, and how many do we have now on comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan is established as a nine-person, right, right? Yep, and we're all, and I'm sending out an email, we're all set.
That's full, the comprehensive plan is full. And which means seven with two alternates, correct?
Oh, it's nine or one.
It's nine, can you remember that we can, so we can work with five. And, you know, that's a group of nine members, and I'm gonna send out an email actually this week, that's why I talked to Rachel and.
And you're gonna meet every other week, right?
Well, we're gonna have, try to have one meeting in March, and then we'll figure out a schedule, and we'll figure out who's doing what.
That's what we did, so you can have it every other week for two years to get something done.
He's on it.
Yeah.
Now, these folks being absent from the planning board, what is it holding up?
The comprehensive plan.
We're just talking.
The comprehensive plan, I understand that, but what else?
No, but the identified people.
Well, by the amount.
Shoreline zoning.
So shoreline zoning.
Then needs to be updated, the shoreline zoning ordinance needs to be updated before, it's got a deadline for the, uh, August meeting.
It's nothing, it's nothing to do with the building fire anyway, though, I mean, it's fire, it's burn that soon. Because that's scary.
Well, I think that's scary.
No, that's scary.
A lot of it's scary.
That's a hundred percent, yeah.
So there are four slots, you've got two.
Right.
And then the two alternates.
We really need two right away, but I'll advertise for all four. Why don't you put it on Town, uh, Town Record and then share it to the Quebec community, go into Norway for all these people who need.
Yep.
My question for Renee. In your experience, if the town is looking for grants from the state, how much weight does the comprehensive plan cover?
Um, it carries, um, I know.
If you don't have a current one, does it affect your ability?
I believe it does.
Um, I'm not sure, we haven't really crossed that bridge yet, but in the other meetings that I've been in, it could, it could. It, it might not, it, it's a plus, it's a, another feather in the cap.
Depends on the grant, depends on the grant.
If it's an updating one.
Four too. But yes, it's a valid point.
Yep.
All right, so we have to vote on anything?
Oh.
Do you want to accept the resignations?
Yes.
And the, um, accepting the resignation.
All in favor, and then we have to, um.
Have Renee post to see if we can get people to.
No, we also have to vote on, um, terminating the two who can't come.
I think they naturally resign.
Yeah.
I, I think, accepting their resignation.
They resign, Cecil and Debbie resign?
They could see would occur, so maybe not, maybe.
No, I thought you said we had to unanimously vote.
Yes, you do, okay.
On a, on a hearing, it's nothing to do with the people that resign.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not ready to get rid of anybody who knows you have replacements, I mean.
Oh, I think so.
Well, it's not like they're, they're here, you know, they're.
But you can't look for replacements if you don't have an open.
So, from what I'm reading here, actually, I think I want to make a motion that we remove, um, the two members of the planning board,
That can't.
Deb Holmes and Cecil Morris, um, for non-attendance, as noted in the ordinance, that they failed to attend at 75 or missed three consecutive meetings.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any vote? So you're now? Just walking the streets and looking for, that's the one board that selectmen can't be on. It might only be planning or selecting, you can't be both.
Right.
And they just have, they do have it, that, um, you know, the shoreline ordinance, hopefully they'll hire two people soon. Jump on up here.
Is this for Justin? That's, that's after Justin. Oh, okay. All right, Justin, that came to an exciting meeting.
It's been a lot of fun. I, uh, had to relicense for my, uh, growing in retail space, uh, back in January. As you all know, I've been in business since 2016, December. There wasn't a lot of rule back then, but I've been right on it since the ground floor. Uh, in 2019, I believe, they passed a new set of laws where if you're gonna open up a new space, after that time, the, the town would have to draft an ordinance, um, to allow this type of spaces. Um, if you were in business before that, you grandfathered, so don't have to worry about it. Uh, there was an era on their end saying, uh, that I opened up in 2020, which we all know I didn't. We all remember the summer of 2017 when I, I spent downtown. Um, so basically, they said, if I can just get a letter stating that Town of Quebec was where I've been in business, um, before the rule change in 2018, then I can, you know, regranted. I've already regranted my, um, license to grow and everything. So I have copies, I have copies of the email if anybody wants to.
A letter testing to that you want to.
I'm all good.
Great, great.
Yes, I remember you down in Quebec.
What are these like, um?
I will mention, we draft, who I am for Justin Foley, and he shall state that he's been in business way before 21.
Yes, it does say it's, it's all.
2016, right?
Well, I think downtown it was 2017 and everybody knew that.
2017.
That worked for 2017.
Yes, perfect, yes, they actually expect a new place.
All in favor?
Can we have Renee write it?
Tomorrow and.
Can we have Renee resign?
Of course.
Right, right, do we just have Renee do it?
Yeah, do you want to give me authority to sign it?
Yeah, I would give Renee authority, right, and send her to sign it.
Okay.
We're gonna make her write.
In other words, she's gonna have to write it and then we all have to sign it before we can have it, I mean, she can just do it.
Yeah, that's probably.
That's what you'll be texting one o'clock.
Thank you so much, everyone, I really appreciate your time.
Everybody can have a job here, it's great.
And yes, they're always this exciting, so you can come back and talk.
Right, fun, sorry, make. Take care, everyone, thank you.
Yes, hi, Justin.
It's a little bit, it's, uh, it's 20 thou, 20, 200 thou, what, 200 million? Oh, our portion is 331, 535, right? It's a little, it's about 25, a little over 25, 20,000 more than last year.
And why are we having assignments to put in, in, in what our budget?
This is the, the, you were saying, actually, Jim informed me that he usually does it, but he, I had a discussion with him.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, his idea of the listeners, and he says, yeah.
So this is what this is the basis. We have to agree to, that's our share.
That's the Quebec share.
331,535.
Say that number again, please, 331.
Uh, 331, 535.
That's the pool for.
That's our share.
That's Lyman's share to the.
Do you want a total?
To Quebec, a total. I mean, Quebec, sorry.
That's including the increase to the negative, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, make a motion that we sign the, uh, county tax.
I make a motion that you sign the county tax as written.
Okay, you can be the second.
Second.
All in favor? That's my.
See me, awesome.
Can I just, it's not the question.
I like these cooperative boards.
I just want, I just, I just have one question, and then I wish Jim was almost here. Because, and when I was reading this earlier, it states that they see our valuation as 200 million, 650,000 dollars.
That's just high.
And I, and I wondered where they got that.
90 miles.
The state provides us.
We've been asking that one for a long time.
You know, I just was curious when it was established.
92 miles of shoreline if they want.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, so.
They redo it every year, they assess something down here.
Now, now, honest, where's our reassessment at?
Yeah, we, um, well, I know you were working, this Tuesday's your work day, but, um, budget committee came, uh, is contemplating putting on an article for another $100,000 to couple with the 100 we had set aside, so we can, we can afford to hire somebody because.
From the bids.
Because the bids came in over what we had set aside.
That's what we're gonna do.
That's what we're gonna, well, from, from, this local can put an article on requesting that, and then we just have to, people have to do that.
And hopefully the bids don't go up between, and now.
I think we have 110 now.
169?
The same, the same amount.
Well, I know it was the last time we had it, 94.
93, something like that. But you've got another option, if we happen to have another special town meeting, um, you could take that money out of undesigned it. We're up to over a million in undesigned it now.
Well, we.
Which is comfortable, which is where we want it to be.
If we can take it out of undesigned it, let's look with the bottom line as a budget first before we offer undesigned it.
Well, I'm just curious, should we just?
So you don't want to have to wait to August.
Well, that's what I'm just thinking, if we, if we made the decision to take it out and don't designate it, we could accept one of them bids. Could you say?
Well, if they're still valid, that's only down until 30 days.
Well, I'm, I know, but I'm just saying, you know, rather than waiting for town meeting, like, maybe we get out of stock.
You just need three months.
You know, we just.
We didn't have a special town meeting.
Authorizing.
That's fine, okay.
Okay, all right, well, um, that's something we can, we should vote on, then, that's another business. Do you want to set up a special town meeting to address the fact that we haven't been able to get a reassessor here?
I think, I think we should.
I think we should, and see if they would approve, well, approve for us to take it out of undesigned it so that, and maybe we can check on the bids and see if they would still honor them or.
We'd be like, do that.
April.
I mean, ask them.
We didn't put it.
We can do, we can ask the legislative body.
No, we didn't put it on, they just can say no.
It's, it's not gonna get any cheaper.
Right, but that's a religious plan, we didn't put an exploration.
It wasn't your calendar life.
Now, so you can act on your special town.
Just, just, we can, yes, yes.
What's the next, um, what's it, we don't have the selectment out, April. Um, you want the same day as the select, we should do it in April, because we've got budget right now, April? I mean, it's not really much.
I don't care, I mean, you can do it before a select board meeting, well. You do it, when do we, yeah.
When do we change back to six, so we can do it at five?
Yeah, yeah, we, we.
That's after April.
Oh, so that's April 27.
So let's do it that night, with the way back to, go back to six, so we go back to five, yeah.
Okay. So, I make a motion that we have a special select board meeting to address the, um, tax assessor issue and any, and poss, and there may be something else. Renee will make sure that there isn't anybody, sometimes there's things working that, that are waiting to be on special town, but I can't think of one right now. But, okay, all in favor?
And this is the on the night of the 27th?